Thank you so much for coming last night. We have so many guests. I'd like to get started. If I could ask everybody to stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Sonal Kulkarni.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
We note all members present except for Casey Rooney. We wish her condolences. She is out of town for a funeral. Casey is our Facilities and Finance Committee Chair. Our Board Secretary, Don Carmichael, is going to take us through the items for action for FNF that came out of committee. Reviewing the agenda for the evening. We have a packed agenda. We always start with communication and we will begin with student recognition. We have so much to celebrate tonight, so thank you all for being here. After that, we will have an invitation for public comment. And then we will hear our student school board representative reports. We will announce our FOIA requests and have some good news to share. Then we will move to our consent agenda. For those of you that follow along regularly, you know that those are items that are routine, like bills payable, approving field trips, things that we have already discussed extensively in committee, those items. All that discussion can be found on our website as well as in the board packet that's available tonight. If anybody would like to look at the agenda and the supporting materials, you can go to our website, d128.org, click on Board Meeting, sorry, Board of Education, click on Board Meetings, and then you can go right into Board Docs where it has the agenda and all the supporting documentation for everything that we will discuss tonight, as well as what we've already discussed in committee that will be approved in one motion for the consent vote agenda. Can I ask, are there any board members wishing to request anything to be taken out of the consent vote agenda for discussion tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed. After that, we will have items for action. Those first four items are items that came out of PNP. Our Chair Jim Batson will take us through those. The second four came out of Facilities and Finance, and Don Carmichael will take us through those. There may be some discussion related to those items. And then number five for information, we'll have our superintendent's report from Dr. Herman. The board will share any comments on events that they've attended since last month. Do we have an IASB, Illinois Association of School Board Report tonight? Okay, so our ISB Delegate Jim Batson will share some brief comments. Do we have anything from Seidel?
No, but we're meeting this week, so I'll have something for you next time we meet.
Okay, great. And then if we have any other reports, if board members have any other information, we will discuss future agenda items and we will convene an executive session, excuse me, for the purpose of discussing two topics. Collective negotiating matters under 5 ILCS 120/2C2, as well as the employment of employees under 5 ILCS 120/2C1. After we complete our executive session, we will only convene an open session to adjourn. No further action will be taken. So, let's get started with the best part of the meeting, student recognition.
All right, yeah. Good evening, everybody. I'm John Gilliam, Principal of Vernon Hills. This is the best part of board meetings is when we get to celebrate our students. In this winter, we had a lot to celebrate both schools. So, we're going to start, we'll bring up the directors of these areas and the coaches to talk about the, maybe in some cases, to introduce the staff and then also the kids. But we're going to start with some success in music and acting, and I'm going to bring up our Fine Arts Department Chair Drew Russell.
Libertyville, we're going to bring up our Fine Arts Department Chair, Mr. Dustin Helby.
Thank you. First up is Theater Fest. We had a couple of all-state theater students at Vernon Hills High School. And so, for those of you that aren't aware with what Theater Fest is, it's the largest, by the way, Dustin has a really well-polished description. I'm going to try to do it justice right now. It's the largest non-competitive theater festival in the world. They also have, yes, right? Okay. They also have, they have auditions for the all-state production, which is really the top students in the state on, for the cast, behind the scenes, also in the pit orchestra, are selected from video auditions to go downstate and perform. And this year, the show was Shrek, and we had a couple of students from Vernon Hills High School. In the cast was Jonathan Protas. Yeah, come on up when I call your name. And in the pit orchestra was Caleb Gummer.
Good evening. And similar to all-state theater, we have all-state music, and it runs a little bit differently. In the fall, the Illinois Music Educators Association hosts auditions around the state in nine different segments. And our District Number Seven is the eastern half of McHenry and all of Lake County and the northern part of Cook, and involves about 100 different high schools. So, students in both voice and instrument will audition. And from there, they are selected for our District Seven Festival Ensemble. And then from there, our top students get selected for the all-state ensemble, which happened the end of January in Peoria. So, we have one student who is representing Libertyville High School today, and that is Lenny Biggs.
All right. And we have several students from Vernon Hills who also were in, were selected for all-state music. This is, I just want to take a quick moment for all the students that have been selected for all-state arts. And I want to thank the parents. You, I know personally how much dedication it takes to commit to private lessons and bringing your kids from A to B and before-school stuff at 7:00 AM and after-school, and the constant ongoing effort that it takes on your part to get them everywhere they need to be, to make us look good and have these moments where we get to recognize them. Thank you so much for supporting your students in the arts. That means a lot. Oh, yeah, and students, thanks for practicing. All right. As I call you, come on up. The first up is Jeffrey Brahms. Kayla Kim. Milla Kim. Not feeling it. John Lee. Bad and over. Sung Young Yang Jay. Eugene Kim. Ryan Suri. Emma Anderson. Young Yun Yu.
All right. One of the things that I hope our community understands that's so exciting is we have excellence across all aspects of our schools. So, while we just celebrated the arts, we're now going to move to some of the academics awards. And specifically, we're going to bring up Rick Brenner, who is our LHS Math Team Coach extraordinaire, and also in his ultimate season as our math team coach. So, welcome, Rick. And I know you're going to talk about some extraordinary academic performances.
Wow, thank you for that intro. Thank you for this opportunity. The LHS Math Team participated in the 25th Annual High School Mathematical Modeling Contest. Is that a mouthful? There were 854 teams participating worldwide from 18 countries. The top 22% get to move on to the next round of competition, the International Mathematical Modeling Challenge. The kids are tasked with solving real-world problems. Two years ago, they investigated ways to make boarding and deplaning an aircraft more efficient. Wouldn't we all like that? Last year, they investigated ways to reduce the stress on Lake Mead. This year, I read their paper. It was over my head. They investigated the, to try to discover and analyze relationships between CO2 emissions and temperature as related to global warming, and to predict future values of said criteria and increase recognition of the problem of global warming. Then the experts grade these, and they take the best papers and try to implement them to solve the actual problems from high school kids, such as ours. We had four team members qualify for the next round of competition. It is my privilege to introduce Stacey Patel, Belinda Lee, Audrey Wadek, and Ian Lee.
So, we've had fine performing arts, little bit of academics, and then we move into our athletics. Both schools had some amazing performances on the athletic competition fields and gyms this winter. And for Vernon Hills, this is two years in a row that we've had many of these young ladies up here celebrating significant sense, success in the gymnastics gym. So, I would like to bring up Head Coach Denise Caden to recognize these awesome athletes.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank the board for, you know, bringing us in once again. Staff, the girls, my parents. We've had an incredible last two years, and I cannot do it without my puzzle pieces, the girls, the team. You know, having the opportunity to win conference, win regionals, win sectionals, and then two years in a row, make it to the big show. It's nothing but, you know, honor and all the girls' hard work. Obviously, we can't do it without them, so let's bring them on up. Annika Chudy. Jessica Delorme. Sarah Gatauski. Christina Raquel. Becca Tron. And then not able to make it tonight, who is at gymnastics practice, of all things, is Livy Tron.
While we're very proud of our BHHS gymnastics team, LHS also had an extraordinary gymnastics season. Our team did very well. And here tonight to talk about one athlete in particular is Coach Tiffany Owens.
I have to go even lower. Thank you so much for allowing us to come to recognize some really special students tonight. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the Libertyville Gymnastics Program in light of the 50-year anniversary of Title IX. This is the 50th year Libertyville has had a girls' gymnastics program. And how fitting to have the most decorated gymnast in the history of our 50-year program to celebrate with us tonight, Anna Becker. Anna is the hardest-working, most dedicated, positive influence on her teammates, positive role model to her teammates, one of the most supportive teammates. I could not be prouder of everything you have accomplished this year and in all four years. So, congratulations, Anna.
So, from a top-placing team to the all-around champion in gymnastics, we also now have some wrestlers that we want to celebrate from both schools. And from Libertyville, we're going to bring up Coach Vinnie Judita. Come on up.
It's Coach Judita, just for the record. No, no problem. My name's been butchered for years, so it's all good. The first thing I'd like to say, I'm sitting in for Coach Egbert. I couldn't be here. And I wrestled for him and currently is his varsity assistant. And he's one of the best coaches to work for that I've ever been around. I learn constantly every day. They call him the Godfather of Wrestling. If you know or been around him or talked to him or did anything with him in the past, you know that he is scientific. His research and development is phenomenal, and that's really why we keep putting out great wrestling teams. It really goes back to him. I'm just glad along the ride with such a great coach and learning so much and being a part of these boys' lives. It's really something special. But we're here to honor our two all-state wrestlers. I will say, I was told to give you a little information on these guys. They are the hardest-working guys you've ever seen. They work out before practice. They work out early in the mornings. They're constantly running, the cardio, the conditioning, and the wrestling. They work hard on the books, so it's in and out of the classroom also. They're just great all-around human beings, first of all. That's our number-one thing. We're making great students first and great athletes second. So, but saying that, they are great athletes, and I'd like to call up Matt Cubus. He took fourth in state this year. A little bit about Matt. He relentlessly works all the time. He's had some injuries in the past and battled through them. He comes back from everything, and he worked so hard just to get through the season healthy. And this year, he took fourth in state, a lot of, a lot of great wins. I wish I had a photographic memory, like, Coach, I got to share them all with you. However, he's done a great job and took fourth in state this year. Congratulations, Matt. Had a great, great season. This next gentleman, Cole Metal Linco, come on up, please. Both took first in state this year. That is an accomplishment above all, especially the quarter rest. I'm going to tell you a little bit of the inside track, because I have it, and I'm kind of, you know, always in his corner, and he says a lot of things to me. And the first thing he said to me is, "Coach, I'm ready. I'm going to take this." And I was like, "All right." And he's like, "State." And I was like, "Okay." I go one match at a time. So, I know we get excited a lot of times on our goals, and we see the end, and we're like, "We're going to get there," but it's one match at a time. And so, he said, "Okay, Coach." And then it was one match at a time, but I've never seen a guy so focused in my career. He was like, "Every guy is my next victim, and they're going to lose." So, and it did. It happened. And there was pins, and then there was wins, and then there was more pins, and then there was technical falls. And then there was, you know, it just kept going. And I'm like, "Wow, this is great, but there's still one more to go." Okay, so when you get to the semifinals and you win, and then you're off to first place in state, all the pressure is on you, okay? It's very, very intense for wrestling. So, I'm even nervous about it still today. He goes in, it's a guy that beat him up last year, and handily, and so he knew that he had a big challenge on his hands. And when they shook hands and we did the grand march, he went out to the middle, and I was like, "He is focused. He is ready." And this guy was kind of like, "Yeah, I got this guy." And I was like, "I don't think you do." So, I'm sorry to me to make this long-winded. It's just, you had to be there kind of thing, so I'm helping you be there. And so, then we get down in the match, and he's ready, he's warming up, and he's like, "I'm ready to go get it." I'm like, "Let's go get it." So, he goes out there, and I mean, I didn't know he was going to get it this hard and this fast. So, he goes out there, he goes, "Bang, boom, bang, boom," and then double, and then boom, boom, 31 seconds. It's all over. Okay, I've been part of a lot of marches in my life, a million, and I'll tell you, there was never one that was so impactful in my career. 31 seconds, he just beat a state champ. He is now the state champ. He's the man. Congratulations. It was awesome. One of the best moments I've ever had in my career.
Coach Judita for president, what do you say? All right, we had some success on the wrestling mats, and to introduce our victims, Jesse Walters.
First, thank, thank you to the board and the community for celebrating these amazing students and athletes. Pretty awesome for them to get this recognition in front of this many people, so thank you for that. I'm going to recognize our senior all-state wrestler, Max Achitola. Max, come on up here. So, Max had one amazing career here at Vernon Hills. He leaves Vernon Hills with a couple of big records. He has the most falls in school history, 74, to be exact, which takes over his former coach, our previous state champ, Jamie Brazil's record at 68. So, that's a pretty awesome feat to have the most falls in the career here at Vernon Hills. He also holds the record for the most falls in a season at 31. Max finishes in the top seven with all-time wins, with 114 wins in his career. And that was, that was with COVID too, and it's unfortunate, because I think if we didn't have that COVID year, Max probably has that record too. Max is one amazing human being. He's one tough kid. He doesn't back down to anything. He's tougher than, tougher than nails. I mean, you see him in a boot right now, and just a little story about him at state this year. Max and I had this little mantra that we started probably about two-thirds in the season. Before every match, he'd come up to me and say, "No kid can touch me or coach. I'm one of the top four kids in the state." We had to be realistic, okay? We knew he was some, we knew he was one of the top All-Americans in the country in his weight class. So, top four was our goal. Max didn't even make it downstate last year, so just getting there was a huge feat in itself. And then when we got there and got to the medal round, he had to win the match in the blood round to get a medal, and he won that. And during that match, he had a break in his toe, and we're not sure yet, but might have broke his bladder plate as well, waiting on MRI results. But I said to Max, I said, "Max, you're fine. You're okay. Like, you're fine. No big deal. It's nothing." Because all season, all season, Max, Max is going on U of U Platinum next year to continue his college football career. Over there, and all season, he was kind of hyper, hyper folk, not hyper-focused, but worried about getting injured. And that was one of the big things, was, "Max, you're fine. You're okay. You're okay." So, I honestly thought he was okay, and just telling me he was fine, but he wrestled his last two matches, unfortunate, unfortunately, both were in losses. But one in overtime, another one real close, going with a broken toe, and went out there, didn't blink an eye. You would never even know until he came after Matt Limpin'. He wasn't limping, he was out there. So, pretty awesome to finish as a career. We fell a little short on the top floor, but it was pretty awesome, pretty spectacular, especially the finish of the season. So, great job, Max.
All right, and LHS is also celebrating an all-state swimmer and actually an all-state diver tonight. So, let's bring up Ethan Paul. Coach Greg Herman couldn't be here tonight, but I got to observe Ethan in his dives. And if you, I know, Mr. Carmichael, you know this very well, but when you dive at the state meet, it's dead silent, and there's a couple thousand people all just staring at you, and you are the only action in the entire pool. And so, not only do you have to be very physically skilled and precise, but you also have to be mentally tough, and you have to go through all of your dives. One thing about Ethan, he, in sectionals, shattered a school record that had stood for 30 years. You have to tell me, it was, your was 512? He dove 512 in 11 dives, and the school record before that was 490 or 4, 492, so absolutely. And he had an outstanding state meet and finished eighth in the state for diving, so congratulations.
So, this is a part of the meeting. First of all, I want to echo Drew's comments. Really, a shout-out to all the parents of our dedicated student performers and athletes. They wouldn't be where they are without you. We know the dedication it takes to get your child to that level. Thank you to all the coaches who pour so much time and energy into our student athletes. This is the point in the meeting where everybody is invited to stay, but we are going to proceed with the business part of the meeting. So, if you have come only for student recognition, now would be a convenient time for you to exit. But we are very happy to see we have a very well-attended meeting, and we're happy for everybody who is here to stay.
Okay, moving on to our next item, Item B, Invitation for Public Comment. We accept public comments related to current agenda topics or other items. It's limited to three minutes. You can't cede your time to another person. Anyone who wishes to speak. I believe we had one person sign in. When you're called, please address the podium, just say your name. And I'll ask Sarah Greenswag to start us off.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Greenswag, and I'm a social studies teacher at Libertyville High School. I've worked in this district for 10 years, and I'm a proud union member. Three years ago, my family and I moved into the district, and I cannot wait for the day when all three of my children are LHS Wildcats alongside me. I have a long career ahead of me, and I want to spend it here. I have a long career ahead of me and I want to spend it here. For these reasons, I was asked to speak on behalf of our union membership to express directly to you, the school board and administration, our collective questions and observations about the direction our district seems to be moving in. My fellow union members and I are here tonight out of curiosity and concern. We believe that everyone in this room tonight is here because they believe that public education is the most powerful tool to uplift all students. We also believe that everyone in this room tonight should be open to feedback and be willing to pivot if we discover that past decisions have done more harm than good. While we appreciate the district administration's recent attempts to solicit feedback from our members in both buildings, we feel compelled to share our feedback directly with the school board. We have filled out numerous surveys at the district's request, expressing our displeasure with a number of issues facing our members, our students and our schools. We hope that the board has seen not only the data, but also the narrative feedback from these surveys. That being said, we still feel compelled to share our unfiltered voice directly with you tonight. Our union is a body of two-hundred-and-ninety-one members, each with their own unique and diverse perspectives and experiences. While we cannot speak to all of them in this limited timeframe, we want to provide a snapshot of some of our collective curiosities and concerns. Number one, a lack of timely and effective communication. For one example, this is now the second time this year that the final exam schedule has not been communicated to staff or students, making it difficult to plan to end of year experiences and adding stress for our kids. Number two, low morale of teachers and staff. For example, the widespread perception that our district is adopting a more top-down business-minded model that feels impersonal and disconnected from the humanness of our work with students. Number three, allocation of financial resources. For example, the potential fallout from the increase in special education class sizes at the expense of one of our most vulnerable student populations. This is in addition to the expansion of administrative positions at the district level at the cost of in-building leadership that's more accessible to staff and students. Number four, the maintaining of our reputation as a high-achieving district. For example, expectations for students have decreased both academically and behaviorally. In addition, this district has historically been a destination for families and teachers, attracting the most talented and motivated people in the field. Today, we fear we are moving in the opposite direction as our best and most talented are stepping down from or simply not seeking leadership positions.
So that's three minutes, but I want to give you a chance. Are you close to wrapping up?
To being done, yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. We believe this list gives you some perspective on a cross-section of issues that we have regarding the direction of the district and our concerns with the leadership. We look forward to seeing the actions that the district administration and school board will take to address these issues. We also want to make it clear that we support our union leadership and their continuing efforts to raise these and myriad other concerns to district administration and to you, our school board. If you would like more information and specific accounts of what we have already touched on, we invite you to attend the superintendent's roundtables at each building in the near future to hear directly from us, the staff and teachers on the ground with our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board? If so, please feel free to uh, approach the podium.
So I don't think I signed in, uh, I guess I started by where I am and where I live, correct?
Uh, just your name?
Socrates Vella. So, I'm not surprised to hear what, what she said about where the academics are going. There was an incident a cup, a couple of weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, where a boy was severely beaten in one of the bathrooms here in this school. And so that video went viral and so I'm here kind of to address that. Two years ago, I believe I asked Dr. Herman, superintendent, about panic buttons in the bathroom. And I think that would have been helpful for that boy when he was getting beat up by four kids. So I'd like to bring that up again and say, what else needs to happen to get panic buttons in the bathroom? I went to UIC, University of Illinois in Chicago. That's a while back. They have panic buttons everywhere. Some schools in Chicago, high schools have metal detectors at the entrance, correct? I'm glad we're not there yet, but I think for now, panic buttons in the bathroom might be helpful. Not only for the students, but for the staff. You have in Illinois where you let males use female bathrooms, correct? Um, our biggest fears have occurred, not here, but in other parts in the country. And that's kind of what, why I had brought up the panic button in bathrooms, because a couple of years ago, an incident had, did occur in Virginia. Again, I have two daughters. There's female staff here. I think we need to give that safety layer to them. So with that said, I, I don't really have anything else to say tonight. And I think Dr. Gilliam, um, done a good job trying to communicate with, what the intentions are for the future. But I just wanted to make it public that I really want to see something along, along those lines. So I don't know who the person's in charge of security. Maybe it's um, gentleman there, I forget his name.
So are you uh, gesturing to Bryant Kelly?
For Mr. Kelly, yes. If he's head of security or whatever.
So that would go through Dr. Herman?
Dr. Herman, okay. So, thank you for your time. On the positive end, I'm really happy of some of the things that have been going on around here. Food trucks coming to the school, the Cinderella play. It, it's a great school and, and it's staffed with some wonderful people. And I've only lived in the area since two thousand and two, so if you probably go back a little further maybe with the. So he is doing a great job, but there's some tweaking. And remember what I said a couple of years ago, when you fix something, you gotta be careful because in your position, you might be breaking something as well. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Vella. Anybody else wishing to address the board, please approach the podium. Going once? Going twice? Okay, we're gonna move on. And I'm so happy that there are so many teachers here to hear this next part of the meeting because some of these student board reps are your students. And we are so proud of the work that they do and the valuable perspective they bring by giving us the student voice. So without further ado, I will hand it over to our student school board reps for their reports. Would you, you know, I'm sorry, first of all, could you bring, be, be sure the microphone is close enough since we have such a full room? Also, if you wouldn't mind saying your name, just so everybody gets to a chance to know who's speaking.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ariel Bren. I am a senior at Vernon Hills High School. Um, it's my pleasure to be speaking with you all tonight. Throughout this last month, Vernon Hills High School students have been immersed in athletics, civics, fine arts and research for the world languages classes. Athletic programs, both old and new, have garnered attention from the student body as winter seasons come to close. The ping pong team, a new addition to the Cougar Athletic Pantheon, has had an active season of intramural competition. Rahil Sheth, a senior, found it fun to be in the city as the team competed at Whitney Young High School and was proud of their performance at the recent Founder's Club Tournament. Senior Vetrey Jagant said that the tournament was competitive but fun and enjoyed playing against schools like Stevenson. Rahil is hoping to find new leadership to continue the team's success in coming years. Basketball has been active both as a VHS team and intramurally. Eric Bamer just completed his first year on the team, describing it as a good time and a fun season where he could spend time with friends on the team. Karjik Vasudevah, a junior, spoke highly of his second year on intramural basketball, marked by Team Vasudevah complete, competing school staff at the recent PEP Assembly. Though staff took the victory, Karjik called Assembly a great experience and a fun opportunity. In a similar season wrap, the Vernon Hills Jazz Band culminated its year with a jazz festival. Rehearsing since October, the Jazz Band demonstrated its repertoire, joined by the middle school jazz bands for a rendition of Watermelon Man. Senior Ryan Soralli highly recommends other Cougars to join the ensemble and says that he is sad to leave a program that he's been part of since sixth grade. Ben Evans, who took on trumpet solos despite his usual performance of French horn, said it was really exciting to see the product of their work come together and that soloing in front of such a large audience, even though it was scary, was a great opportunity. During the school day, world languages students have been working hard on a department-wide passion project. As a new initiative, student sentiments vary regarding the project. One junior in AP Spanish shared that while he enjoys the research and analyzing how his topic impacts other cultures and communities, he was not as excited about executing the physical components of the project. A French student shared concerns over the project, project's impact on class time as she approaches AP testing. And an AP German student, though appreciative of the creative in-class work time offered, struggles to make his research relevant to his test preparations. A junior noted the overlap between the workload of the research, of this research project and their history fair project, struggling to find areas of interest for this project given the redundancy identified. Overall, students are adjusting to this new component of their language immersion. Cougars have had no shortage of excitement as they explored music, sport and language over February span.
Hello, everybody. My name is Hari Jan and I am a senior at Vernon Hills High School. February has been a very busy month for the Cougars. Firstly, Backlight Theater Company proudly concluded a successful winter season with the winter play Murder on the Orient Express on Fe-February second to the fourth and the freshman sophomore play Treasure Island on February seventeenth through the eighteenth. After these fantastic performances, the spring play, The Complete Works of William Shakespeare, abridged, revised, again, is in the works. On February twenty-third, Vernon Hills High School had a blood drive where the Cougars were able to give back to their community. Many signed up and for senior Anna Sigler, it was rewarding to know that she was helping someone in need. For many Cougars, the testing center is like a second home, a place to take a missed assessment or retake one. Starting early February, the testing center implemented a new policy. In order to take a test, students would have to sign up on a signup genius for a designated time slot. This was to avoid the overwhelming number of students that came in after school to take a test and to avoid loud noise that would distract students that were already sitting down to take one. While this new policy has ensured more tranquility in the testing center, students show frustration. Senior Sonia Alun Chakhanani noted that it is very stressful knowing that a student now has no guarantee that they will be able to take a test when they feel the most confident about their material and that they now have to worry about finding, finding a time at which they will be able to take it. With the limited availability of the seats in the testing center, Sonia noted that using the arc as an extension of the testing center would help to stop the stress that students now have regarding whether or not they will be able to take their tests and help with spatial availability. Racism prevention has been on a roll this month, going on field trips to elementary schools such, such as Rockland Raptor Elementary School to perform skits regarding relationships, bullying and peer pressure. Senior Dylan Turani noted how nice it is to see the children get so engaged while watching the skits and how gratifying it is to know that he is able to make a positive impact on the students. After a day off for Teacher Institute Day, the Cougars came prepared for the first day of Winter Dance Spirit Week. While jamming to Hollywood songs that played during the passing periods, many students were dressed like one another and depending on the day, I think I even saw Adam Sandler as well. No doubt, the Cougars came fully equipped with school spirit the whole week leading up to the winter dance. And on Friday, in the school assembly, there was so much excitement for Saturday night. The winter dance was very fun and depending on the room that you were in, the vibes were very different. For example, students that were watching Shrek in the studio theater were very calm, while just a couple of steps away in the gymnasium, people were moshing. All in all, the Cougars had a very great time. The month of February was huge for a lot of seniors. After getting their early action decisions back, a number of seniors committed to college this month. Senior Jenna Sala, who committed to the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, noted that it is such a relief to not stress about waiting for more schools and further future planning. With that being said, she also noted that she has noticed a little bit of a decrease in motivation because she is more relaxed now. With all of these commitments, I am only hoping that I'll follow in their footsteps soon. As conversations in the hallways have shifted from the discussion of Valentine's Day activities to when spring break is going to come, the Cougars keep moving and grooving to the beat of their own drum. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sophia Marie. This month has been one focused on empowerment. Emma Anderson, a leading club member of the Black Student Union, BSU, says it's been a month of, quote, "celebrating black success in culture, of shining light on experiences that they face and the richness of their identity." School-wide trivia questions gave classes the opportunity to discuss small, exciting, but meaningful topics about impactful black leaders. Teachers scrambled to call into the office to submit an answer to the trivia questions, but it didn't take very long for the school phone line to get all overwhelmed. In my class, students were quick-thinking, hopeful that they'd win the end prize, which thankfully we did. Being one of the first winners, we got to indulge in deliciously made chocolate-covered Orlens made by black-owned local businesses. According to Anderson, the trivia was much more than just a game, but rather about, quote, "highlighting events in the world that have to do with black culture." Throughout these past couple of weeks, they've done just that. At VHS's first BSU family night, black VHS students and their families came to meet and as Anderson said, to, quote, "talk about their experiences." At the HBCU event on President's Day, underclassmen got to hear from a diversity of colleges speaking about the unique and supportive communities that they have. At the BSU movie night, students got to laugh and kindle new friendships. Anderson mentioned how healthy and, quote, "good" it was for us to get together, even though we're not at the same school. But more importantly, she says all these events have been an important, quote, "opportunity" for kids who aren't black to understand the impact that black people ha- have had on inventions, education, and to see why we face racism and why words are hurtful. Throughout high school, Anderson has been inspired by BSU. The safe space it's built for her, the layers of her identity that she's found and that she's able to help other people find. It showed her from the guest speakers that have come in to speak to the many BSU events that, quote, "being black isn't just about the focus on racism. You don't just focus on racism, but also in believing in yourself." In my conversation with her, she said something that struck me and unsettled me. Quote, "Initially, I didn't, I did not, I did not feel comfortable in my culture because I had only ever, I had only ever had white friends. I realize you can't hide from your culture. I was able to grow so much because I joined BSU." The reason I say this is because Anderson's probably not the only one. The community and the affinity space is something she's so thankful she found because it showed her what it means to be uniquely and unapologetically black and to be proud of that fact. Yet beyond that community and affinity space, at times it's not perfect or even safe. Anderson explains that she hopes more classes, especially English classes, can, quote, "teach things like affirmative action and institutional racism even when it's not during Black History Month." Additionally, she wished that, quote, "there were more people of color teaching in English classes because of how much it would enhance students' education with more well-rounded perspectives." It is unsettling to think that some students, like Anderson, don't get to see that many people who look like her in authority and teaching positions at our schools. It's unsettling, it's unsettling to think that even among such a supportive culture and school that that's influenced her, that the black identity is often buried deep. Perhaps, perhaps it should be a wake-up call to me, to you, to the school. Within the Hispanic and Latino community, there were, there was also a lot of celebration and opportunity. Just a couple of weeks ago, the Chicos and Chicas Club went to the United States Hispanic Leadership Institute Conference where they heard from inspiring speakers that talked about educational equity, work-life balance and the pathway towards excellence through internships and career networking. Inspiration and encouragement is a unique concept, one that we hope to engrain into the culture at VHS. Just a couple of days before Valentine's and Valentine's Day, Dare to Empower VHS's Gender Advocacy Club held a table giving students the opportunity to write affirming positive statements. Among the chaos of students' busy homework and sports-filled lives, it can be refreshing to just stop for a moment and add some positivity to the hulls and maybe the minds of students. Aside from a lot of the cultural affinity spaces, the sports community has also prospered, finding lots of success and trophies. The gymnastics team placed second in state for the second year in a row after a season full of a lot of success. Underneath all the trophies, though, was a lot of hard work. Senior Becca Tran says that, quote, "going to every meet with such a good team felt so exciting" and that "it felt incredible to compete so successfully this season and eventually make it to state." Bowling also made it to state. Ashley Shoemaker, making it to the finals of state, said it was a long but rewarding journey to see how much progress and hard work the team put in. The fencing, the fencing team, a lesser-known sport- The fencing team, a lesser-known sport, has also had a successful season, sending in fencers to the Junior Olympics and beating teams like Stevenson Deerfield, as well as schools in Indiana. At the conference championship, which had a culmination of schools across three different states competing, the men's team got first and Bethany Bohemer got third. Senior Bethany Bohemer, a member of the women's fencing team, said that the sport has been thrilling and exciting. Despite the community and supportive teammates she's found, she also says being in a lesser-known sport can be frustrating. In a quote by her, she said, "I just wish more people knew we existed. Most of the reactions I get when I talk about our team is what? We have a fencing team. It's frustrating that we never get recognized except for notes in pop prints, whereas other teams at V H H S will get shout-outs during announcements for doing well at the end of their season." Trophies have filled the shelves of V H H S hallways, but so has the not-so-visible journeys that students and affinity groups have taken to empower, reflect, and advocate and educate.
Hey, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm Fatima Manshawi. I'll just start off the LHS report. So, Sukho is wrapping our shine season as we danced the night away at our winter dance on Saturday. We enjoyed our silent disco and photo booth moments, a refresher from the cold and long semester. In our assembly, students and staff participated in relay races in blow-up costumes. Teachers were represented by gigantic giraffe, and they won the big game of Hungry Hungry Hippo. Our arts department has a ton going on this month, including our choir cabaret concerts, which was celebrities' edition this time. On Wednesday night, students dressed up as celebrities like Beyonce, Elvis Presley, Harry Styles, and performed music from some of our favorite movies and plays, including La La Land and Tik Tok Boom. Senior Samantha Chen, our very own senior concerto competition winner, will solo at the Orchestra Winter Concert on Thursday, March 2nd, and she says she's super excited. February is Black History Month, and LHS students and staff plan many events to educate everyone about important figures in Black history. For example, in my AP Lit class, my teacher shows us a different poem every day by a Black poet as we learn about their work and its meaning. We also visited the Black History Month Museum in the library during our social studies class, like in my government class, and we also discussed achievements of Black artists and athletes in the United States. This is so important as it ties back to our daring mission as we value diversity, equity, and inclusion. Additionally, our daring mission encourages students to be aware, and Wildcats definitely exemplify that as students brought in hundreds of water cases to donate to Palestine, Ohio to assist the residents that were affected by the train crash that spilled toxic chemicals into our community. So, very proud of our Wildcats for exemplifying this daring mission this month.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Lafita and I'm a senior at LHS. Thanks, Sarah. I just want, um, one of the main things that I want to talk about inside of my board report actually does echo what some of the teachers were saying or what Ms. Greenswag said during the teacher public comment, which was confusion over the calendar for this year. It's already March, and I know that a lot of my friends and myself are kind of frustrated at the fact that we still don't know what's happening with finals for seniors and just finals in general. It's causing a lot of anxiety among students and staff because I personally and a lot of my friends go through classes differently when we have in mind that there's a final at the end of the year. It requires a lot more long-term planning and a lot more thought going into your schedules if there's a final, and we're already almost halfway through the semester and we don't know that yet. A common sentiment I've heard among teachers and students alike is that it's already almost March and we still don't know the state of finals. And another thing is lots of seniors don't even know when our last day of school is, which is kind of rough. A lot of us think it's May 19th, and that's what we've been told, but that still hasn't been finalized yet. And it's just, in general, very confusing and frustrating that we still have the schedule for the end of the year, which is in pretty much two months, still not done yet. But on happier note, state tournaments have been coming up for many clubs. Lots of clubs are preparing to go on to state series. Scholastic Bowl is heading to their regionals tournament this Wednesday at Lake Forest High School, and if they win, they'll move on to sectionals. I'm personally really excited as a member of the varsity scholastic bowl team. Math team won their regional tournament this past Saturday, beating Vernon Hills by only one point, and they'll be headed to state soon. Senior and math team vice president Omar Mahmoud said, "The team has been rolling on all cylinders." "The team has been rolling on all cylinders all year long, especially this freshman team." Everyone is excited about the regional win, but there's plenty of room for improvement and to clean up on careless errors made, so state should go even better. Everyone is looking forward to the first true state meet in four years. Debate Junior Varsity is headed to state next weekend, and Varsity is headed there the week after that. And I'm on debate and I'm actually really excited. I'm unfortunately not able to compete at Varsity State this year, but I'm really excited to be judging JV State. And I'm just really excited for my teammates and seeing all of the preparations that's been going into the state tournament. As well, on the same line as state, we've had a lot of athletic wins at state tournaments. Lots of LHS kids have won or placed. Two of the state winners here, they were just here earlier, but Cole Madalenka won state in wrestling and Anna Becker won in gymnastics. So, we're just really excited at all of the athletic and academic accomplishments of the Wildcats.
Hello, my name is Sarah Wu. So, as the winter season wraps up for sports, we had a lot of tryouts begin today, including badminton, boys and girls lacrosse, and water polo. Students are really excited for the final sports season of the year. And Jazzy mentioned finals. Another thing that has been on students' minds recently and also I feel like for a long time, has been the bathrooms at LHS. I think it's something that we oftentimes take for granted, but our bathrooms, at least the girls' bathrooms that I've been in, they flood very easily. They're just like very outdated where doors don't close all the way or doors are broken, or there's locks that are broken, or the locks aren't there at all. There's also sinks that, you know, like where water doesn't come out, and the paper towel dispensers oftentimes, it's kind of like a hit or miss. You don't know if paper towels are gonna come out. And, you know, just like visiting other schools for like sporting events, I've seen their restrooms and bathrooms, and I feel like our school maybe doesn't kind of meet the standard for that. And I think it's not only like a sanitation issue, but also I think there's some accessibility issues, so it can also be an inclusion and equity problem. Senior Leah Trudy said that there's only a few locations within the school that are in convenient places and, or like the nicer bathrooms are in inconvenient places while as the ones that are, that more, like, people go through, they're just like in very, very poor condition. Alex Clark said that the boys' bathrooms are very dark, not inviting, and again, there's drainage issues. So, just on behalf of the students, I think the bathrooms and improving the bathrooms is worth the investment and something it's, since it's something that students use every day, we really think that more attention and care needs to be paid to the bathrooms. And I also think this gives us room to maybe expand more gender-neutral bathrooms or just find out different ways that we can, you know, be more equitable and inclusive in that aspect of the school also. So, thank you for your consideration.
As always, very nice job. Thank you. You brought up some good issues, and in the interest of time, we are definitely going to circle back to those issues. I think a couple of those items are coming up later in the agenda as well as in next month's committee meetings. So, we hear you on those bathrooms for sure. We hear you on the final schedule for sure. And those are two things that the board definitely is paying attention to and looks forward to a resolution. Moving on, next we have our four-year requests.
Yes, we received seven different four-year requests since our last board meeting. The first was received on January 23rd, and it was requesting documentation from bid and bond for all documentation and outstanding. We responded on 1/27. The second came on January 26th. It was from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association asking for the names and email addresses of any certified staff member who are retiring. Number three, we received a request on January 27th from a local lab asking for information on disseminating information for public interest and not personal communication. It was for all teachers. For years 2020, 2021, and 2022. We received another commercial request on February 2nd from Smart Procure for any information about physical copying, scanning, or printing materials that we use. Number five was a commercial request from February 7th asking for information from the bid and tabulations for the Vernon Hills Project for Roofing. Number six is a commercial request that we received on February 22nd. Again, another request for a bid opening tabulation for them to have those bids released. And the seventh commercial request received on February 24th asking for bids and tabulations for the resurfacing at Vernon Hills, and we replied to all of them promptly.
Great. Thank you for the time that it takes to respond to those lawful requests. Moving on, some more good news.
Yes, this has been an evening of good news, and some of the students reported on some of the things that I had on my list. So, thank you for sharing them in the student voice, so that will make this a little bit shorter. First, I want to recognize that 16 students received the February Ellen Swick Cougar Class Act Award. Congratulations to Olivia Irvin, Amy Rupsis, Alexis Reinstein, Elizabeth Eitel, Sophia Marin, Vislav Sagan, Alexandria Solinsky, Courtney Euglinka, Jaden Rush, Nathan Clemstein, Rahil Seth, Sophie Cottle, Emma Anderson, Christian Lesko, Caitlin Hughes, and Ashley Shoemaker.
I don't want to prolong your good news report, but Jasmine, do you want to share which teacher nominated you and for what?
I was nominated by Ms. Rash and Ms. Klein. It was me and then four other people from the Dare to Empower Club that I'm in. So, that's a fairly new club, and they wanted to recognize us for basically helping to lead and grow the club.
Congratulations.
Next up, we recognize Department Chair Deborah Kellum as she was named the recipient of the IACTE Lifetime Achievement Award during the Illinois Association for Career and Technical Education's conference. The Lifetime Achievement Award is given to an individual member whose dedicated contributions have been identified with the work and purposes of the association over an extended period of time. During her 34 years in education, Deborah has contributed in countless ways to the growth and development of her CTE teachers and programs. Next, we have additional students to celebrate, and this is for our D-128 National Merit finalists. And we have two of them who are sitting here with us at this table. Jasmin Lafita.
Congratulations.
Others from LHS are Omar Mohammed, Belinda Lee, Aditya Chakra, Charles Verkulyn, Chase Hauser, Zheng Xu, and Samuel Lamb. And then from Vernon Hills, we have Ariel Shifrin, as well as Chloe Bodhi, Jeffrey Brahms, Anaga Srisha, David Wang, and Jacob Wang. Congratulations to all of the finalists. And then a few additional things. We also get to recognize, as we did before, not only academics, but some arts and some success in art competition. The following LHS students won awards in the 2023 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. The gold key went to Samantha Chen for painting and drawing, Elias Irizi for digital art, and Ro Potsek for printmaking. Silver key went to Samantha Chen for sculpture and printmaking, Abigail Flanagan for digital art. An honorable mention were Lily Castro for digital art, Samantha Chen for comic art and drawing illustration, Brianna Dunworth for painting, Atalia Herman for printmaking, and Elias Irizi for digital art. We also had students compete in the Family and Consumer, excuse me, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, which is FCC LA at Harper College. Congratulations to Erica Von Kirkpott for receiving a gold in the frosting competition, Margot Kaufman for receiving a gold in the relish tray, Elizabeth Mulligan silver in fondant competition, Sophie Vovjek and Elsa McAlay for gold in Most Outstanding in Children's Literature, Shannon Paola silver in apparel construction, and Mirabella Marubio gold in apparel construction. And we also have V H H S junior Haley Collinsgowie was crowned Miss Lake County of 2023 on Saturday. Didn't know about that. That's really interesting. And then finally, we have students from D-128 who were recognized at the Illinois Council for Exceptional Children's Northern Recognition Yes I Can Award Ceremony. And I'd like to congratulate Danielle Murakoa, Noah Hewitt, Danielle Granados, John Keating, and Eric Eitel. And one last one, I know I skipped, we have one Special Olympian who brought home the gold in 2,000-meter and the bronze in 1,000-meter snowshoeing from Special Olympics, and that is Joseph Mahler. So, that is a wonderful list of accomplishments for all of our students and staff.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Herman. Moving along for action, I'm sorry, for the consent vote agenda. I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please.
So moved.
Second, Carmichael.
No worries. Roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Great. The consent vote agenda passes. Moving on to items for action, I will turn it over to Jim Batson to take us through those items that came out of the Property and Personnel Committee.
Okay, good evening. We have item A is the board policies. This is a second reading, so this means these have been reviewed in committee meetings for the last two months and also read into the record for our first reading last month's board meeting. So, I think we've reviewed these plenty and made any tweaks we needed to do and ready to accept these for a second reading and adoption. We can have a motion, please.
Move to approve the updated board policies as recommended.
Co-Carney, second.
Any further comments, questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. The next item here is for the ISB Press Plus Policy Update Services. This has to do with the service that the Illinois Association of School Awards provides to maintain and actually help us publish those policies in a very easy-to-use format. So, we can have a motion to approve this purchase.
Hessel, a motion to approve the contract with ISB for Press Plus Policy Update Services for a one-time fee of $7,800 for board policy manual customization and an annual fee of $950 for a subscription to Press Plus for a customizable maintenance updating service for the D-128 Board Policy Manual.
Co-Carney, second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. The next item is the Transition Pathways Administrative Assistant. Oh, I skipped C. I'm sorry. My cursor went one too fast. English Order Department Chair. Someone give us a.
Yusimi will give a short summary.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, so this is to propose a position that'll support our EL teachers who've currently been doing all of the administrative tasks that come with the EL department, such as coordinating and screening of any new students, as well as administering the test and ensuring that proper placement, that they're placed properly. Also, preparing all of the annual parent notification letters, articulating with schools where students transfer in and making sure they have all the. articulating with schools where students transfer in and making sure they have all the appropriate data to place them correctly. Also articulation with the feeder schools in preparation for any uprising freshman. The coordination and administration of the annual access testing, and then monitoring and tracking student progress for both current students and our students who have exited on our monitor, as well as supporting the BPAC and coordinating some of that. And then, of course, the task of developing courses to meet the very specific linguistic needs of students who may be coming in newcomers. We've had a significant number of newcomers this year versus, you know, a language level four student or a language level five. And then they also have the task of providing professional development to other staff to help them better support students. So this will be structured like a department chair where they will teach two classes and then the remainder of their time will be dedicated to the administering of the program. We do, we did have a significant increase from last year to this year from eighty-one students to one hundred and twenty. And Dan was telling me that he can see what's coming from the feeder schools.
Is it, is it his crystal ball? Does he have data?
He has some data. And he thinks we're going to have a significant increase coming forward.
Okay, that was, I'm not ready yet, but like, but yeah, sorry.
Is it enough to trigger the mandatory full-time administrative position?
It's too early to tell. What I can tell you is EL will be a prominent feature of District one twenty-eight for the foreseeable future.
And I do think that's something that we talked about at previous meetings is once our student population reaches two hundred, we are required to have a full-time administrator to do all of the work that Yessenia listed. And we are so thankful for the teachers who've been doing that work up to this point. But because we're at one twenty, we definitely for next year want to invest in that system and making sure we support those students and those teachers.
So when we discuss this in committee, I mean, that the purpose of this is to alleviate the responsibilities that the classroom, that the teachers are taking on, overburdened, put into this district, even though we haven't been triggered by that benchmark number.
Yes.
In preparation and anticipation of, and to get them to speed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Can we have a motion, please?
Move to approve, oh, sorry, Carmichael. Move to approve the new English Learner Department Chair position to serve Vernon Hills High School and Libertyville High School.
Benjamin, second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Okay, now we're up to the Transition Pathways Administrative Assistant.
Those of you that were able to attend our ribbon cutting ceremony just over a week ago at Transition Pathways. Our facility is up and running. It's great to, you know, have the facility for our students. It's been a challenging year with, starting at Sullivan Center in Vernon Hills, using district office for that program, but we're happy to be in our own site on Milwaukee Avenue. But because I think our staff did such a phenomenal job of taking this program back from CEDOL, our numbers of students exceeded what we expected in year one. So, you know, we had set, when we looked at this two years ago, two and a half years ago, of setting our program with staffing, with space. One of the things down the road was to have a dedicated office personnel at Transition Pathways. We want to up that timeline a little bit and get approval for that Administrative Assistant position to be at Transition Pathways to help with paperwork, transportation, but budget items that are currently being kind of spread between the Transition Pathway Coordinator, Teachers, the AIDS, the Special Education Administrative Assistant, and the LHS and VHHS data processing teams doing the work in Power School. So we want to bring that all into one kind of own school and have this Administrative Assistant. And again, that was in our projections that we talked about before almost two and a half years ago, but with the number of students, we'd like to up that timeline a little bit, so.
Just to remind people that with the increase in students, it's the cost savings that we avoid from sending the students out to CEDOL. So when we expected twenty and knowing next year we're going to have forty, we really see the need and the investment. So it's not like this is an additional cost. This will come from the cost savings from those students not having to have outside tuition.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to, Drumkey, sorry, Carol, motion to approve the new full-time Administrative Assistant for the Transition Pathway.
Hessel, second.
Does the board have any additional questions or comments?
No, we discussed it extensively in committee.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Motion passes. We do have a few additional employment of employees. These came in after the committee meeting earlier in the month, so these were not in the consent agenda, so we have a motion to approve these.
Hessel, a motion to approve five employment items that occurred after the PMP committee meeting.
Colcarney, second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. The yearbook was under PMP, right?
Okay, so I can take over and say.
Your book is in PMP?
Is it?
FNF, FNF.
Yeah, okay, then I will pass this over to my colleague, Don.
Thank you, filling in for Casey Rooney, but I'll turn it over to Dan.
This is a five-year agreement with Herf Jones for the printing of the yearbook at Vernon Hills. There's a similar agreement we did a year ago for LHS, so this is a very similar, the students, you know, pay for the yearbooks. And, yeah, so this is with Herf Jones for a five-year agreement, cost of sixty-five thousand, seven thirty-seven, eighty-eight per year.
I move to approve the five-year agreement with Herf Jones for the printing of VHHS yearbooks at an annual cost of sixty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Batson, second.
There is further discussion, also covered well at committee. All right, Carol.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Okay, the next, oh, motion passes. Forgot my role. The next bit is the Ten Year Life Safety Survey, which was a panic the first time we read it because it seemed like it was overwhelming, incredibly expensive. Mark did a very nice job in committee of going through the individual items and letting us know a little bit about why some of them were overstated. So thank you for that. It relieved some panic, but I guess I can turn it over for Mark to fill us in. Or Dan, whichever of you loses.
I'll fill in, you fill in any gaps. So this is a ten-year, ten-year report required. The process is it goes before the board, then it goes to ARWE, and then goes to ISB. And at each, each of those stages, they have to approve, review each item and approve it. So once we get that information ultimately back from ISB, that's when we can really work on an action plan to address it. This is really to acknowledge, to knowledge the, the light, the, the violations on the list and then, and then, once we get the information back from ISB, that's where we develop a plan to address them. They've already addressed a ton of the issues, but this.
I mean, there's a significant amount that's already addressed.
Yes.
Corrected, right?
Yes, but we, you know, they still have to be documented and go through the process, so.
Yes, and there are other items that we did complete, you know, during COVID that weren't on this list as it was delayed, you know, during COVID being submitted, so. And we will work with SDR and, and finishing's in-house, it could be finishing house and contractors to do the other items and, and the costs aren't really representative of what it is actually going to cost, you know, it's going to be less.
So the updated values that we saw on the A, B, and C, do those include the, what we expect to be cost savings? If I looked over the items for A and it came in at like three hundred and fifty thousand and this one says three hundred and five thousand, so you've already gone through and said this isn't going to cost this much, the new signs aren't going to cost that much.
We got those numbers directly from the architect, which puts in the numbers, so.
Okay.
There, there could be a slightly different number from, actually, the architect puts in both numbers, so they shouldn't really be different. But the difference is immaterial, the focus is really the actual violation.
Right.
And then going through that process. But there shouldn't be any material difference in the number. I mean, slight differences maybe, but it shouldn't be a material difference in the numbers.
Okay. And then items that are listed as C, those are the ones that we don't have to do, but we're still likely to at some point, like there's a.
There are equipment items, air handlers, things along those sorts.
They're on schedule anyway.
On schedule already on our long-term capital project list that will be addressed in the future. So, but they're not required at any point to be done for the life safety. So we're asking for the board to approve the life safety report as submitted.
Can I hear a motion?
Batson, I move to approve the life safety report as submitted.
Hessel, second.
Further discussion?
And just to be clear, this is the report that we're submitting. We're not asking, we're not approving doing these things, we're just approving submitting this on up the, the process.
We're just acknowledging the violation.
Yeah, yeah. Very good, Carol.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, the next item up is a bid approval for Vernon Hills High School Roofing.
Yes, we went out for, we looked at, for background, we looked at the roofs on Vernon Hills High School that are due for replacement and we chose the roof that was leaking the most and in most need of work, which is roof number sixteen. We went out for bid for replacing that roof over during the summer. The apparent low bidder was A-one roofing at a cost of nine hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. They acknowledged the scope of the work. We have contingencies in, in the, in the bid for material cost increases and other items. So per our consultant, we are recommending that the board approve this bid.
Can I hear a motion to approve a bid with A-one roofing for the two thousand twenty-three Roofing Removal and Replacement Project at Vernon Hills High School for nine hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars?
So moved.
Second, Batson.
Discussion.
We've discussed this extensively for years. It's been a budgeted expense that we've known is coming. This is kind of putting the punctuation on a years-long conversation.
Indeed. Okay, roll call.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay, and the last one is a, oh, gosh darn it, motion passes. Do we have government students here tonight? I'm a model of what not to do.
No, we're setting a good example.
We're setting a good.
Civic engagement.
There you go, civic engagement, perfect. Okay, the last item is a bid approval for the Vernon Hills Roadway and LHS Stadium Hardscape Replacement.
Okay, thank you. We went out for, for bid for the VHS, VHSs roadway replacement, which is Cougar Way. And we also looked at the LHS Stadium Hardscape, some issues over at the stadium. So we're looking to upgrade some areas there. So we bid it as multiple projects. The base bid was for the Cougar Way replacement to that, that's a mill grind and replace of the surface, replacing some curb work and, and other items along the way. And then alternate number one, replaced Hardscape over at Libertyville High School in the area where you enter ticket booth area along that space, replace a walkway to the public restrooms, which has sunk into the ground some, and so trying to bring it back up to grade for handicap and as well as along the front of concession stand, replacing the asphalt along the fence line there. So the bid for, the base bid for the, well, actually, we had six bidders on the project. We had eight contractors come. The base bid for the Vernon Hills project was two hundred twenty-four thousand and eight dollars. And for Libertyville alternate number one was a one hundred and eighteen thousand and three dollars for a total cost for both projects of three hundred forty-two thousand and eleven dollars. And we asked the board to approve both of those projects for, to go ahead for the summer's work.
Hessel, so moved.
Batson, Batson, second.
And, and we might have a discussion item.
Comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to give the context, like the, we had an estimate of fifty thousand that we had originally for the scape and this is way higher than that. I, I gave a little bit of narrative, but I just wanted to emphasize that this was way over what we estimated. I think when they actually walked, when they walked and actually wrote out the scope to realize that the work that needed to be done in that area was larger than we had originally anticipated. And so when we got all the numbers in, because some of the other projects have come in under, we felt like we're still kind of at that near the four million dollar number that we had said back in, earlier in the fiscal year or January, maybe, yeah. So that's why we felt comfortable recommending this project going forward. Normally, if we had a project that we estimated at fifty thousand and it came in over twice that amount, we would take a very serious pause there, but we felt, given the context of all the other projects we're looking at, why we felt comfortable moving forward with the work because we do feel that it's important work that's needed for safety reasons, so.
We have had a motion in a second, so roll call.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thought I was going to forget.
Yeah.
And we move on.
Okay, moving on to for information, I'll turn it over to Dr. Herman for a superintendent's report.
Certainly, the first thing that I want to celebrate are the wonderful learning sessions we had last Monday for our staff, administrators, teachers, our ESP staff all participated in some very high-quality learning about microaggressions and our work towards that inequity, towards faith's law, really understanding the increased restrictions that there are now on educators and their students in terms of appropriate boundaries and relations. We also had a required EL training that, again, as we're increasing our student population, all staff, we have to show that we've had all staff trained in whatever aspect of EL they might provide support for families or students. And then in the afternoon, we had a few different ones. Some of our teachers presented, we also had some outside presenters, but that was more of a variety. And then in closing, we had an amazing keynote speaker, who was actually a recent graduate from Underline High School, who also, a few weeks ago, gave a spoken word performance at the Chicago Bulls. And it was very much about celebrating the power of education and everyone, how much he appreciated having teachers show him the stage and letting him find his niche in being an amazing learner and how much he encouraged and celebrated our teachers and doing the same for our students, so. Anyone else on our team want to acknowledge anything else from the Professional Learning Day? Wonderful. Okay, the second thing that I'd like to do, and I'm actually going to head up to the podium just because there's a couple of documents I wanted to show. We have received as a board, and I get copied on all the emails that you receive from parents and some students asking us some questions about some of our program differences, and so I thought it might be nice. I've been answering and copying you on all the individual ones, but I had two meetings in person last week also. So I thought this might be a nice time with my update to give you just sort of a status of where we are, so. Again, so these are a few documents that I pulled that are going to help me just demonstrate where we are in the process of responding to one of the things that's really called for in our racial equity policy. So if you can call that up, Bo. So one of the things that we did over, as we've been reporting to the board, is trying to make sure we're very clear on how are we gathering the data and what evidence are we providing the board to show progress towards our racial equity policy? So one of the things that we did uh um over as we've been reporting to the board is trying to make sure we're very clear on how are we gathering the data and what evidence are we providing the board to show progress towards our racial equity pro- uh policy. One of those commitments is commitment three. And the part that I want to focus on, um and again Larry and the district equity leadership team have made other presentations, but this particular one. Um has an administrative focus because it is to monitor and assess the impact of educational programs on the achievement of all students. Which students have access to different programs, um and then to do some sort of a curriculum audit. Um you know from our. Strategic plan that a a long-term curriculum audit project process is gonna be undertaken over the next five years, so not specific curriculum. That we've paced out over time, but the idea of access, uh do students have access to uh high-quality instruction and similar opportunities at both campuses? So if you can go to the next document, Bo. So one of the things that we did was we worked with the administrative team and we created some categories of which parents and students had made suggestions on our. Um uh satisfaction survey last December, where there were some differences that they wanted us to pay some attention to. So the idea of differences that might be between uh Vernon Hills and Libertyville on student schedules, on courses that are offered, if you can scroll down. Pro- programmatic differences. And again, there there were a lot of, there were a lot of things that we identified, some very minor and some major. So one of the things we did next is knowing this list is not something we can tackle immediately. It was gonna take some time. So we then asked for all administrators to give some feedback according to those um priority statements. Uh this is not equitable access and it is an immediate concern, meaning it's something that we would really either legally or ethically want to make sure we remedy very quickly. The next one is, it does have some possible equitable concerns, but it's something that we either need to get more time in terms of more data. Or potentially more student voice or something like that. So we said it is important, but it's not something we can do immediately. The third category was, this might not be equitable, but it might not be an area of concern. It's just due to differences that may be outside of our control, a physical difference in the building or something like that. So we understood that there were differences. The next uh document, please, Bo. So then we worked as an all-admin team and worked in groups of four, so we had eleven different groups and that we went through each one of these where we had mixed teams and they were talking about the nature of each of these differences. And so what we did from all of the administrators in the district, we gathered some priorities. And you'll see here that the top ones are listed, many of them being um direct interventions for our students. And direct ways that we're delivering instruction, specifically, um you'll see pauses listed there. Uh we also have some course structures, the finance and the facilities. So you see what some of the things we talked about now with bathrooms. And you know, having equitable access to those kinds of life safety things at both buildings, the administrators also placed high on the list. So next slide or next document. So from that ranking order, what we did is said what really should be for this school, for this school year, meaning kids registering for class, because a lot of those things were related to student course request. Um we set up some things that we thought could be manageable this year as the more immediate, knowing the other things would come in future years. So we identified uh looking at equity and access for the pause program. The EL program, which you helped us do today in terms of making sure that students have access to both the building leadership and the district leadership on these issues. Um the department budgets, making sure that we are auditing and being very clear with the differences of allocations between the buildings as well as um a- among uh different departments in a in a building. And then the facilities, which we will be bringing to you in March with our priority recommendation. Um the last one, the early and late start, this is one that we feel is important, but we could not make that happen before this particular course registration. Um but parents, it was one of the things that was cited in one of the parent emails to us where students at Vernon Hills are required to sign up for seven classes and a lunch. And students at Libertyville have the opportunity to have a early or early, early release or a late start. And parents were questioning why that difference is allowed between the two schools. So I wanted to let the board know in a bigger context, because we've been receiving parent feedback about some of these things in isolation. But I wanted you to know, we've been working on this in a very methodical way to try and get input and set some priorities and make this. Move forward in a in a way that's responding to student and parent concerns, but not so quick that we're not doing due diligence and not doing our our best work and our best thinking. Back to the. One other thing that I wanted to point out, um we several of the emails that we received were also asking us questions about grading and grading practices. Um that was one of the top things noted in the parent survey last year, um and we have been having some specific instances um come to me and the board. Asking about questions about that. And I did want to remind the board that we do have a committee of administrators and teacher leaders who have volunteered to study this. And who will be bringing us back some recommendations. It might not be a complete, you know, um. Eleven commitment um sophisticated policy like we've, we had for um equity and inclusion, because grading is very complicated. It's a very complicated issue. But we know from some of the things we're hearing, our parents do expect us to be able to measure student learning in a very equitable way. So we're gonna be navigating that, but I wanted you to know because of those uh parent messages that we are working and the teachers are playing a very important role in that. And then the last thing, we have a retreat coming up in March and um I'm going to be asking, and I probably can do this at closed session, but um one of the things that we're gonna be doing is using. Primary resource to read as a team, so as some shared learning, and I want to know if you want the hard copy, the audiobook or a PDF of the chapter, because I want to make it easy and accessible for everyone who's gonna be there, so. I'll get that information from you, but that's my update.
Thank you, Dr. Herman. Um for board comments and events, um who'd like to get us start off, started off on some things that they attended or learning that they'd like to share?
I can go ahead and. Did somebody else say?
No.
Uh I can go ahead and start. Um attended a couple of things. Um as you know, we're part of Ed Redd, the um education advocacy group. Uh I sit on the um uh safety, school safety um committee for that group and we had a meeting earlier in the month. Primary focus was on the uh clear and present danger uh legislation that. Uh there's a a number of people trying to clarify and really um um solidify the role of administrators and educators. And how that law applies in the um in the academic setting. Uh and then related to that, the the fall, the prior week I had attended the um Ideacon. Actually attended for my my day job, so to speak, but it's also relative. Um uh the Illinois uh educational technology leaders had a session there with Paul Tim. Also on school safety. Uh Paul is is a great resource and really. This was um. Uh the day uh that which mass shooting, there was so many this last few weeks, but there was a mass shooting that had occurred. That day and it was a a very interesting conversation that came from that. But uh it was a very, very nice session. Uh in addition to Ideacon being the, like the premier Illinois statewide. Technology, education, technology uh conference. Uh so it was nice to be able to get both of those this month.
Good, and I know you would have been with us at the ISB legislative breakfast with the legislators, but you unfortunately were ill, so we tried to uh represent. In your absence, um we got to hear from uh Mary Edley Allen, Dan Dyditch, Laura Fever Diaz. And uh Nabilis Sayed. It's the first time I'd met the uh new um house member. And um it was an excellent panel discussion. They talked about their perspectives, the committees that they're participating on, legislation that they're paying attention to, and then took questions. Uh from the school board members in attendance and I thought it was a very worthwhile.
Yeah, my takeaway was that all four of them are ardently committed to education. Like they're they're the real deal. They really want uh Illinois students to be um free of birds of encumbrances to the educational process. They uh, I I think that they, their hearts and minds are in the right place when it comes to education.
And two of the four are educators, which is really nice to see.
Yeah, Mary and um, who's the other one?
Uh Mary, uh Mary Edley Allen as well as Laura, um also is a history teacher. Yeah. Um I also had a chance to attend um the microaggressions workshop put on by Larry Varne at the Institute Day. Um I learned a great deal. It was incredibly worthwhile. I also attended with Dr. Herman, the Black History uh museum exhibit at LHS, which you heard about from the students. Very impressive, very uplifting. Um it would really did a great job shining a light on. A very wide spectrum of black excellence, um things that you don't always see or think of. You know, I think it used to be very widely associated with Rosa Parks and Martin Luther King Junior, and those are very important people to continue to learn about. But there was a a spotlight that was shined on so many facets of black culture, um music and the arts, um technology, agriculture, um. Entertainment, I mean, there's just so many different facets. It was really incredibly well done. Uh and I want to shout out to Ann Singleton and the librarian at LHS.
Emmy Wiggins.
Emmy Wiggins, thank you um for really pulling together a lot of resources and um look forward to seeing that event continue hopefully in the future. Anyone else want to share any events or learning?
Uh I I attended also the uh Lakes Division meeting and the uh microaggressions uh training held last Monday. Um agreed, both were very uh very good use of my board time, I felt. Um but I especially enjoyed learning alongside our District one twenty-eight educators over at LHS. Um and I am up for doing more of that whenever the opportunity presents, so thanks for allowing us to join your learning.
Great, thank you. Um. There was no seat all report, correct? Meeting is tomorrow, so we'll hear back uh next month. Oh, I skipped right over you, Jim. Can we, can we please hear from the ISB delegate?
Yeah, and I, and one of the reasons I wanted to do that is the February eleventh, the uh Lakes Division Legislative Breakfast. I I was so sad to not be able to, um you know, that I could not attend that, but I did want to give a shout out to Carol and all of those that were involved in hosting that. That was actually hosted at Libertyville High School, so.
Yes, thank you.
Uh so thank you uh to all those who uh were involved with that, so and they they were very, very happy with that uh that result. We had not done one of those in a, in a while, so. At the uh Lakes Division uh level, we had discussed that uh since about. Late fall, we've been talking about doing something like that, so I was glad to be able to uh to help facilitate that. Couple other things, just a reminder, the uh Lakes Division meeting is March eighth. I know a few of you have signed up. Anyone else wants to attend that? Uh it's up in Ingleside this time. Um and that'll be coming up um. Uh before we know it, and then each of you received, this is the the. The results of our meeting that I attended on your behalf in November, updates to count IASB Constitution and the position statements that we uh all discuss and then uh collectively vote on. By all the districts across the state, so you have a copy of that and that is my IASB report.
Thank you.
And I forgot a shout out to the best buddies of LHS, because uh right after that meeting, we had an opportunity to go down and to the gym and see. It was just joyous. It was fun. Um. Uh a lot of families brought their kids and uh there were bouncy houses and face painting and um.
The most incredible balloon animal art I have ever seen.
By far. Like a giraffe is nothing to this guy. He was doing like squids and.
They had noise makers involved. It was art. Yeah.
It was spectacular. Um so I just wanted to say thanks to those uh who put all of these extra things together for our communities.
Yeah, I think the community really appreciated it.
Yeah.
Great event.
One more um event to acknowledge, and I want to thank you for being an excellent ribbon cutter at the Transition Pathways uh event. Casey Rooney also attended. Um and it was just wonderful, students, staff, everyone was there and really appreciated the board's support in making that happen.
And I learned that those giant cartoonist scissors, those actually work. Okay, uh future agenda items, um we have them listed in the board packet. There is one additional one for March based on some teacher feedback. We're gonna be adding um. Discussing the Vernon Hills High School Language Lab to our agenda for uh March Committee. Um any other suggested. Uh agenda items at this time.
I'd like to address, I mean, that's a very specific thing, but I'd like to hear. What our plans are going forward based on some of the comments that we heard here tonight. So I don't know how to, that is an agenda item. Um but I would like to continue this as a discussion.
Yep, I'd like to add, I think uh the feedback also from the students about the calendar and not knowing the finals' schedule, et cetera. Like to get an update on.
Is that something we can reasonably accommodate at the March Committee meeting?
I know the committee met last Thursday, so teachers and administrators have been meeting to work collaboratively to make the decision, so I don't want to speak out of turn. Yes, Sonia, when will that be ready to share?
So we met on Thursday and then on Friday I um. Sent some documents over to our attorney, Mr. Fester, and so as soon as he clears up some things for us, we should be able to um have a resolution.
Okay, so possibly at the March Committee meeting, we'll get an.
I think we will, we will.
March thirteen is the committee meeting.
And if we hear back, we would be reporting that. We wouldn't wait until March thirteen. As soon as we hear back from our attorney that it's okay, we will share it with all stakeholders, but then we'll give you an update on what that ends up being.
Perfect.
I'd like to um propose that we add an item to the agenda regarding something a little more specific, uh when we're talking about. Inequities between the two schools and something that's kind of been brought to my attention recently that I wasn't aware of as a community member was the differences in how we celebrate our graduates within the district. Um and particularly our our graduation ceremonies. Um I don't want to open an entire can of worms, but I think it's something we need to discuss sooner than later, and so I'd appreciate if we could add that to the committee meeting for next time.
Okay, any other future agenda items? Okay, then uh if we have no other uh future agenda items to propose, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn for executive session.
Carmichael, move to convene in closed session.
Kulkarni second.
Roll call, please.
Do we have to identify the ILCS?
Oh, yeah.
I did in the.
Kulkarni.
Review of the agenda.
Aye.
Um Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye. Okay, we will um convene an executive session. It's eight fifteen now. Let's take a five-minute bio break. And then we will uh meet.
And there will be no action.
Library classroom, and we will be taking no action when we return to uh simply adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Batson, so moved.
Hey, waiting, waiting, Carol. Sorry, Carol.
Don't worry, take your time. Things fine.
Okay. Okay, now we are ready to have a motion and a second to return to open session.
Batson, so moved.
Carmichael, second.
Okay, voice vote, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, may I have a motion and second to adjourn the meeting at ten fifty-one PM?
Carmichael, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
We are adjourned.